I call this meeting of the Hurst Yills Bedford Independent School District to order. At the record show that the corps of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. Good evening to everybody, welcome to our first summer school board meeting. And we're going to start this evening with an invocation led by Dr. Fay Blue.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to pray for you. It's very special to me. Would you join me? Gracious God, this Board of Trustees, my very favorite, and the staff have just come through completing the 23-24 school year. They've wrapped it up in a nice package, they've put a bow on it, and yeah, there are still some lingering things that have to be done, but it's pretty much put to bed. The celebrations were magnificent, and we watched children at all levels, pre-K kids, kinders, elementary, junior high, and high school seniors move on to the next chapter of their lives, whether to other education phases or out into pursuit of their career. The community looks at those celebrations and goes, "The year's over. It's time for the board and the staff to kick back." And yet, we know that nothing is further from the truth. Budgets don't write themselves. Strategic leadership moves and new hires don't happen in a vacuum. Curriculum writing and textbook recommendations don't just fall on the people's desk in August. They don't come to work one morning and go, "Oh, I guess we need some of those things." All of this happens while students, for the most part, are enjoying some time away. So I lift up this group of trustees and this staff to you. They have a long journey ahead and a long meeting tonight in preparation for all that is yet to come. Give them what they need, and only you knows what that is, whether it's physical, mental, emotional, or the whole package. Thank you for all they bring to this task, from the tenure and experience of Andy to the fresh eyes and enthusiasm of Becky and every piece in between. Use those, bring it together, that together they might build the foundation for the work that needs to be done to ensure a successful 24-25 school year. And finally, dear God, I pray that you would release the funding being held at our state level that this district and their companion districts around here and across the state need in order to effectively serve the students and staff who look to them. That would be a fabulous miracle. We know you're capable, and we pray that we would get to see that come to pass. All of this, we ask as it aligns with your purpose and for your glory. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Blue. We always enjoy your invocations. Tonight, we are excited to introduce four outstanding elementary school students who will lead us in our pledge of allegiance. These young individuals have demonstrated exceptional character and dedication to their school community. Walker Brown, 4th grade student. Blair Brown, 1st grade student. Berkeley Brown, pre-K student. And Annie Brown, future pre-K student. These four students, Walker, Blair, Berkeley, and Annie, represent the best of our elementary schools. Their diverse interests and contributions to their school communities exemplifies the values we strive to instill in all our students. Please join me in welcoming them as they lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
.....................................................................
Alright, kids, stay up here for just a second. Annie, come back. We have certificates for each one of you, and we want to pass them out to you and then let everyone take pictures, okay? So I have one for Berkeley. Thank you. Blair. There you go. Walker. And I guess who's this one for? Annie! Turn around, let them take pictures of you. Thank you, Walker, Blair, Berkeley, and Annie. We appreciate you coming tonight. Alright, so this is the first regular board meeting after our, when we would normally be seating new board members after election, and this is the board meeting where we read off our ethical standards. So they're on your screens. So I'll get us started and we'll just read them together. As a member of the board, I shall promote the best interests of the district as a whole. To that end, shall adhere to the following ethical standards. Equity and attitude. I will be fair, just, and impartial in all my decisions and actions. I will accord others the respect I wish for myself. I will encourage expressions of different opinions and listen with an open mind to others' ideas. Trustworthiness and stewardship. I will be accountable to the public by representing district policies, programs, priorities, and progress accurately. I will be responsive to the community by seeking its involvement in district affairs and by communicating its priorities and concerns. I will work to ensure prudent and accountable use of district resources. I will make no personal promise or take private action that may compromise my performance or my responsibilities. Honor and conduct. I will tell the truth. I will share my views while working for consensus. I will respect the majority decision as the decision of the board. I will base my decisions on fact rather than supposition, opinion, or public favor. Integrity of character. I will refuse to surrender judgment to any individual or group at the expense of the district as a whole. I will consistently uphold all applicable laws, rules, policies, and governance procedures. I will disclose information as confidential by law or that will needlessly harm the district if disclosed. Commitment to service. I will focus my attention on fulfilling the board's responsibilities of goal-setting, policymaking, and evaluation. I will diligently prepare for and attend board meetings. I will avoid personal involvement in activities the board has delegated to the superintendent. I will seek continuing education that will enhance my ability to fulfill my duties effectively. Student-centered focus. I will continuously guided by what is best for all students of the district. Alright, thank you, board. Tonight, the Board of Trustees is meeting in a work session and its regularly scheduled monthly meeting to officially act on items included in the posted agenda. The Board welcomes and appreciates comments and input from the community. Open forums provided at each meeting to allow the public to address the board. There'll be two open forums tonight. Open forum number one is to hear requests regarding agenda items only. Open forum number two is to hear requests or make comments regarding non-agenda items, and will be heard at the end of the meeting. Those addressing the board are asked to limit their comments to three minutes per meeting. The speaker should identify his or her name, group affiliation if any, make a brief presentation with an identified solution of quinnisat. Remarks should be addressed to the board as a whole. Oral presentations may not include charges against any employee or board member by name. It is my responsibility to determine that the person addressing the board has attempted to resolve a concern informally through the district's complaint policies. If not, the speaker will be directed to follow the appropriate policy. The board requests that all presentations be made in a courteous, respectful, and professional manner, and asks that speakers monitor their own behavior. If you wish to speak during one of the open forums, please fill out one of the cards located on the table and then resolve. We will go with the board activity chart. It's been a very short time since our last board meeting. Does anyone have anything that they want to speak to?
So there's a couple things, obviously, we attended graduation, but I do want to bring attention, I went and attended the leadership luncheon over at the Pat May, and it's just always an opportunity to cheer our amazing staff and just watching them continue to educate and rise to different levels and get to cheer all the things that they did. So that's it.
I got to attend the big announcement at Eldie Bell High School where the Eldie Bell Blue Raider Band was announced to be performing in the 2025 Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade. And if you want to see the video, come see me afterwards because it was an incredible excitement. They didn't know until that day when the announcement was made, and it was something I'll not forget for a long time.
Alright, superintendent's comments, Dr. Harrington?
The only additional comment, we have our superintendent's circle of giving with our education foundation tomorrow evening, so we're excited again to work with our foundation and all they do for our teachers, providing for the innovative grants.
Any clarifications?
None at this time.
Ready for open forum number one? No, no cards? Alright, so at this time, the board will retire into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Me- Opens Meeting Act, Texas Government Code Chapter 551. The board will adjourn into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, 551.072, 551.074, 551.076. Those aren't working either. Just, just...
I don't want my second one to...
Okay, alright, well, we'll get together.
Sheriff Dan? I gotta hear the stream. It's a 30-second delay, so this is awkward.
I don't think that's odd. I don't think that's odd. I was trying to... Then once we kind of double check it, then we will pull up the calendar. Can I start? Yeah, I saw you. I was looking for this, I'm pretty sure I saw you. I'm just me, when I popped down there. It's like, I saw you. But I didn't have it. I guess, well, I got it right. Yeah, Catholic. I got one red color. Right. Right, true. Oh, that's okay. Alright. So, so surprised. Oh, it's probably... Yay, okay, great. That's what she said. Yes. And you did the documentation. Well, that's productive, though.
No, that was good that we got that.
Yeah, good.
They're daily change.
Yeah, right.
Take two or five.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What time? It's 12?
Yeah, 12.
A minute. You say that 12 over Blair?
12. 12-ish.
Yeah, I might soon by at least to say hi.
Oh, well, they have... Yeah, in Blair. No, not Blair. One of the deans.
Okay.
Oh, there is no secret. It was just that, thank you. It was just hard that I wasn't going to have to make it. That's a secret. That's a.
At this time, the board will reconvene into open session. Uh, we have a couple of action items. The first one, eight point zero one is going to be, uh, no action. Uh, eight point zero two, uh, consider approval of school health advisory council shack board appointed members. Did we?
Can you get through to us?
At this time, the board will reconvene into open session. Uh, we have a couple of action items. The first one, eight point zero one is going to be, uh, no action. Uh, eight point zero two, uh, consider approval of school health advisory council shack board appointed members. Did we?
Can you get through to us?
Good evening. As the H E B I S D School Health Advisory Council Chair, I'm here to request approval of the parent members for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the school health advisory council board appointed members as submitted.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the board to approve the school health advisory council board appointed members as submitted. Please vote. And that motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. All right. Item nine point zero one, budget workshop. Mister Williams and Mister Jones. Yeah. We can't see over there, so you just kind of pop up.
Uh, well, I'm gonna turn it over to Stephen Jones, our budget coordinator. Uh, he's gonna give you a update on our budget, where we're at. Uh, as you'll recall, back in late February, early March, we, we, uh, looked at our, uh, budget numbers there and just gonna go over some changes and, uh, where we're at. And this, this should end up being fairly close to where we'll land in August, so. Mister Jones.
Okay. So, we'll start with our current status, where we currently are falling on the current year budget. Right now, we're estimating a little over two hundred and seventeen million dollars in revenue. And for expenditures, we're coming in a little, uh, just a little under two hundred and twenty-seven million. So, but a deficit of about nine point four million dollars. Four million of that comes from the rollover funds from last year's budget that was approved back in the November board meeting. And then that leaves us with about five point four million dollars that we're gonna pull from the local, um, set aside fund. Originally, we had budgeted just under thirteen million, so we're coming in quite a bit better than that. We're hoping by the end of the year to close that gap even further, um, with underspent expenditures and hopefully a little bit of extra revenue that comes in from our interest revenue and other places. Our locally defined capital projects fund, um, right now, our major projects going on this year out of that fund are Bel Air Elementary, um, the concessions and press box, the replacement vehicles that y'all approved at the last board meeting, and then several security projects that have been going on throughout the year. Right now, we have a little over sixteen million dollars that are unallocated toward any project. For our twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we'll start with our enrollment. Our current enrollment for this year was twenty-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-six, which was up from last year. We are projecting to either be flat or down next year. And as you can see from Templeton's projections for the future years, it continues to stay flat to down. In March, when we brought the, um, budget for you, before you started looking at raise packages and everything, we were looking at revenue of two hundred and thirteen million dollars. An expenditure budget of two hundred and thirty million, which was a deficit of seventeen million dollars. Where we sit right now has a deficit of about twenty million dollars, so about an increase of two point eight million dollars that we'll have to pull from the set aside fund. Some of those changes that have made, been made since then, um, our property insurance, it looks like we're gonna go up about one point one four million dollars on property insurance this year. There's been several staff positions that have been brought to you guys over the last several months that have totaled out to about six hundred thousand. Um, SROs right now, as it stands, it's gonna be about two hundred and twenty thousand more. If we add any more, it'll increase that as well. Um, our uniform replacement cycle is coming in about two hundred thousand higher than last year. That one varies from year to year, just based on what the, what's coming up on the replacement cycle. AP exams are coming in at a hundred and seventy-eight thousand more than last year. And electricity with the added square footage is coming in about a hundred and fifty thousand more than last year. So, from a future outlook, um, as I said before, we're looking at about twenty million dollars coming out of that set aside fund. That would remain, that would leave us with a remaining balance of twenty-three million dollars. In twenty-five, twenty-six, if there's no changes from the legislature and enrollment projections still stay with no growth to declining enrollment, we'd be looking at another twenty million dollars out of the set aside fund, which would leave us with about two million dollars in there. And then twenty-six, twenty-seven, we'd use the remaining balance from that set aside fund and have a deficit of just under twenty million dollars. That would leave us with fund balance that year of ninety-seven million, so about five months a month of operating. And then twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we'd have an estimated deficit of twenty-three million dollars, which would still leave us with about three point seven eight months of operating. And that's where we stand as of right now. Do y'all have any questions?
Just for clarification, your future predictions assume the legislature does nothing, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
So, I know we usually get into this more at the, uh, facilities meeting, but the Templeton projections, I think this is the first that I've really, first time I've ever seen them really going down so steadily. Have they given us any reasons for, for that projection, or?
The, the information from them and, and the way that scale, it made it look kind of like it's going down more. It's more of a flat to a small, uh, deficit, but as they're looking at the growth that we are seeing, uh, and seeing some of the, uh, housing that's coming in, much higher end that is being built, uh, that's their, their expectation. We've already talked about, we kind of see a, 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 an enrollment that is, I guess, the word, sweet spot. And I think we're gonna have to continue to watch that. H E B is a sought after district. And as we watch our enrollment, we can make some adjustments to, uh, schools of choice. We can make adjustments to, uh, uh, our outside of district transfers. I think we just have to continue to watch. We were always very tight on that because we, we didn't have seats. So, we're gonna really watch that closely to make sure, because we do, we, we want to make sure we fill all seats. And just a few empty seats i- i- is not beneficial to maximizing the, the programs that we offer. So, we're gonna watch that very closely, but H E B beat the odds this past year, where we grew where they did not expect us to. And I think we're gonna continue to watch, are we still attracting people that the numbers are saying that you may go this, but people are s- seeking out H E B?
Um, and I've had a very recent conversation with board members from across regions ten and eleven. And, um, the interior districts, um, such as us, are, are losing, um, numbers far greater than ours. Um, the only ones gaining numbers are on the outskirts of both regions ten and eleven. And, um, to the point of many districts having discussions of, of closing schools and, um, doing some more extreme things than, and we're not having any of those discussions. So, um, not to say that this is the direction we want any of us to go in, but I, I, I think we're better off than a lot of our neighbors.
Oh, yeah. I mean, the, the fact we're not open enrollment, many of these are, have been open enrollment for a number of years and are still losing students. So, I do think, um, I would be, you know, like I said, I, I think that we have a really good shot of continuing to control our enrollment, uh, through open enrollment or other aspects of it, uh, that other districts may not, because of the reputation and the, the success that we've had academically.
All right. Any other questions on the budget? All right. Thank you, Mister Jones. All right. We're to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they'd like removed from the consent agenda? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the board to approve the consent agenda as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. All right. We're ready for reports and presentations. Item eleven point zero one, report on employment resignations or retirements. Any questions on that? Eleven point zero two, revision to administrative regulation, D E C, compensation and benefits, leaves and absences. Miss Tuttle?
All right. So, tonight, the administrative regulation, the first one that we're bringing to you, um, does get us in alignment with the changes that you approved in January with regard to the changes to some employment calendars, um, as well as the addition of well-being days and, um, a non-work day for one employee group. And then the increase to the number of leave days being allowed to be used annually. So, what you're seeing in these changes are things such as removing two hundred and forty and turning it into two thirty-six or two forty-eight to two forty-four. You're also seeing, um, a spell out in the administrative regulation what the process will be for those well-being days. For example, that they are still, um, restricted from some, some use, um, and, and going into all of the details there. Are there any questions about the first regulation?
Any questions? All right. Revisions to administrative regulation, D E D, compensation and benefits, vacation leave.
And so, in this policy, the only real change had to do with the number of days. But as we do, anytime we look at a policy, we always look for opportunities to clean things up. And so, you'll see just some general cleanup, some changes in verbiage that make it a little tighter.
Any questions? All right. Thank you, Miss Tuttle. Uh, eleven point zero four, dispersments for the month of May twenty twenty-four. Any questions on dispersments? All right. Item eleven point zero five, universal screening. Doctor Norgard.
Good evening. All right. I have, um, it looks like two items. It's for reports, so here we go. We will start with reading three D and M class math, because this is our end of year data. Um, you know it's related to our strategic plan where we're specifically looking at early literacy. Uh, and as a reminder, there are some things, when we look at the trend lines, a little broken because we had new baseline, uh, data with new tests in lectura, S E L, and B A S. So, um, first, we're gonna look at year-to-year performance within the grade, so different groups of students. So, we do see a slight decline. Um, lectura, the new Spanish test last year, we had that huge gain, so we think this is actually kind of leveling. There was something with that, um, assessment being new. And again, different groups of students. Because when you look at this group of kindergarten students, their performance across the year, the green line is students testing in English, the yellow in Spanish. Um, really, our English grew a little bit and our Spanish, just they really held consistent with their performance. And remember, the benchmarks they have to reach, even when that stays flat, that does mean students are growing, because what it takes to be proficient at middle of year is a different mark than what it takes to be proficient at the end of the year. So, the expectation grows. So, even if the line looks flat, that is, um, growth for those students to have maintained on that line. Um, kindergarten, the performance was actually, um, very consistent in the overall with the previous year's kindergarten in comprehension. And we did see more of a change in Spanish. Again, we think introducing that new assessment, sometimes there's a little ripple effect as, um, we get new baselines. Uh, here is the typical mid-year comprehension dip for kindergarten. You'll see it in every single cohort when we get to first and second grade, but so when we look from beginning of year to end of year, we have increased, this cohort of students increased their comprehension. Um, in first grade, um, the change was in the Spanish side as well, so similar to what we saw in kindergarten. Um, we see, um, a little more movement for this cohort of students across their first grade year, but we saw a nice, strong growth from them in both languages in kindergarten, just a little fluctuation here in first grade. Um, and their comprehension, um, small dips overall, you know, one and two points, um, not as much, we keep our eyes on it, but we're looking for where there are continued drops. Um, so, this group of first graders, we see the standard pattern at kindergarten, but really coming up in the comprehension here at the end of first grade. Second grade fluency, again, Spanish took, um, a larger dip than our English. And we've got lots of data on these students, because we've had them for three years, um, but really not a lot of fluctuation in their fluency lines, both in English and in Spanish. When we look at their comprehension data, very consistent performance, um, compared to the previous year's second graders. So, that tells us things about our curriculum when we look at the year-to-year performance, and then we need to look at the instruction and intervention when we look at cohorts. And also, you see, this group has maintained, um, very even performance across the year in their comprehension. So, any questions about the reading three D part? We'll jump to M class math. This is the last M class math report I'm going to give you. Um, it is related to our early numeracy strategic plan goal, but for context, you may recall, I mentioned at middle of year, we have struggled with this assessment. We brought it on when we were required to begin, um, assessing in early numeracy. It's the same publisher as reading three D, as Dibbles. With reading three D, we'd had good success with the company, but they are not responsive in math when we ask questions about benchmarking. And we just feel like where they've set the standards are not appropriate. Um, when we have, uh, Doctor Lauren Allen, who does all of our research and statistics, she can't get out of the yellow in the counting according to their benchmark for kindergarten. How high can you count in sixty seconds? So, we just have some questions. So, we are moving away from that assessment and to math. So, this is the last group of data. So, we've steadily improved. We just don't feel, um, enough confidence in what it is that this is measuring. But, the group is climbing in this measurement, as they are in first grade, across the two years. And in second grade, actually, we've kind of flatlined. So, we are ready to move to a new measurement that I feel like will bring y'all, um, much more actionable data for our teachers and students. Oh, and one more, the cohort trend for second grade. So, questions about M class math? Okay. We've got another one coming up. I feel like a TV commercial, but wait, there's more. Okay. So, MAP, measures of academic progress. This is for third through sixth grade. It's our end of year measure, and this has to do with progress. It is MAP growth. We are really looking at growth. So, there's an achievement element, but we're also looking at how the achievement grows over time. So, this is where we have to put on the different thinking hat because this is not criteria and reference where everybody could get everything right. It's norm reference. So, it's all about comparisons, that standard bell curve that we learned about. So, when we start thinking about percentiles, 50th percentile is average. That is not, oh, my goodness, half of them failed. That is, we are right on the bell curve. So, reading. So, you have both languages where they're present. I'm really just going to draw your attention to, I think, the bar is the greatest visual that we want more in blue and green and shrinking red and orange sections. So, we look at this group of students. You'll have one that splits out English and Spanish, and then, this is the across-the-year comparison for these students. So, actually stayed fairly consistent with our number of students that are in the low. So, we're looking at what are we doing for those interventions? Why are we, we want to be shrinking the red. As far as growth goes, remember, I told you 50 is about, would be a standard bell curve. So, this group fluctuated their growth from middle to beginning and then, middle to end of year just hovered right to one side and then, the other of that 50% mark with our third-grade reading. Fourth grade, we test in both English and Spanish. When you look at them across the year, you will see that we do still have about a fifth of our students in that bottom red-low percentile. So, we need to be looking at how we're intervening for them. And this group, when you see in fourth grade, their growth stayed to the left of that growth curve of where we would like for them to be. So, not only the red, but the fact is they're not moving. We need to be seeing more students moving out of red into orange and the orange up to yellow. So, we'll be looking at our fourth grade as well. And this can tie when we also look at STAR performance, all of those pieces together. In fifth grade, we have just a few students still testing in Spanish, but you can see varying results compared to English across the year. Very similar pattern to what we were seeing in the other grade bands. And closer to that 50th percentile mark, but still to the left side of the bell curve, where we would like to see more growth, both from beginning to middle and middle to end. And our last grade of reading, sixth grade, very similar patterns. We started with a even smaller percentage in red, but we ended the year with more students in red than we had at the beginning of the year. However, when you look at individual students, so some of those weren't perhaps the same students. Some red went to orange, but maybe some orange went to red because they were closer to that 50th percentile mark in sixth grade. In math, third grade, very similar patterns. This was just something that we saw, a lot of consistency. However, the growth where those students were moving within third-grade math, individual students compared to themselves, we were on the right side, which is also the good side, the right, the right, right side for our bell curve. Fourth grade, we saw more in the red. So, similar, these fourth-grade students in reading that weren't growing, we're seeing the same thing in math. And we'll look at STAR scores as well. We have our eyes on this year's fourth-grade students, so that means we will have our eyes on next year's fifth-grade students. What's happening, what kind of support can we offer? Is it something different in the curriculum? Is it an approach to instruction? Are we finding out there's something different in the assessments themselves that we need to know and be able to respond to appropriately? Fifth grade, we see that we're pretty consistent in the amount continuing in red. So, they are to the left of that bell curve for growth. And sixth grade, again, fairly consistent. It's a smaller amount of red than we saw in reading, but it stays about the same at beginning, middle, and end of year. However, from the middle to end of year, so there's some other movement beyond just those bands. We do see 57% of our sixth graders showed, they met or exceeded that growth from the middle to the end of the year. That is our typical pattern for the couple of years now that we have historical data for MAP is we get more growth typically from the middle of the year to the end of year. Beginning to middle, not as much. Middle to end is where we just really drive everything home is what our data tends to show us. And again, as we move through the grades typically is also we see the longer we get to keep the kids, the more we can move them. As you'll see, when we look at STAR data in particular, as we grow up each grade, those gaps between us and the state get bigger and bigger. The longer we keep them, the better we can do for them. So, this certainly held in this growth model as well.
So, for my clarity.
Yes, sir.
If you were looking like middle of year to end of year, if it was at 50%, then those students would have grown pretty much exactly what you would expect them to have.
Yes.
Okay, so anything hires, they did better than that?
Yes. And it's an adjustment because 50 doesn't sound good when we're talking about all these other reports that I'm giving you. So, grade level cohorts, just a quick look at how they're doing when you put the same kids, because we mentioned fourth grade in particular with their growth, where you can see, well, is there a difference in reading and math? Some yes, some no. Third grade, we saw a little bit of difference between reading and math, not as much in fourth. Fifth grade, very consistent, other than perhaps the high-average green band. And in math, again, in sixth grade, the high-average green band. We had more students performing at that level than in reading. Questions about MAP? Yes, sir.
So, I just have a quick question. And is this typical? And I noticed that our Spanish speakers taking the math test, very small group, but they tend to always be in the red and orange and almost no activity in yellow, green, or blue.
So, particularly as we move up, like our fourth or fifth-grade students that are still testing in Spanish, we're usually exiting them to English by that point is our typical. So, our students that are still testing in Spanish frequently, of course, we have to look case by case, but frequently, they perhaps did not come to us with schooling in their native language. So, we're overcoming both a language barrier and the other. If we haven't moved them to English by then, there are more things going on with the student typically that we definitely need to be looking at and seeing. Why is this still red and orange? But that's not unusual.
Okay, okay.
We just have to determine, is it the academic or is it the language? Any other questions about MAP?
All right, preliminary STAR and EOC scores.
All righty. We are continuing to get in usually, because this is preliminary. Sometimes, we brought to you, we have a little more final, but this was like hot off the presses. So, we don't yet have all of the same comparison district data. I have some state comparisons for you. I'll be back and bring you more of all of that. But of course, connected to our strategic plan, we have specifically had goals in our strategic plan that we are moving off of and on to our new one about MEETS and Masters grade level. So, year-to-year trend data, what we're looking at right now, this is not about cohorts. I'm looking at last year's third to this year's third, those kinds of things, just looking for those patterns. Okay, so here is third grade. You will see red. I know that many of you already had the opportunity to see this report. I do want to give a little context to up and down movement with the STAR test. And the reason I go on and look at the state, and we will eventually be looking at comparison data. We don't want anyone to fall and we don't want to make excuses and say, well, we fell, but they fell worse. You know, something else was worse over there. It's like, wait, that's the wrong direction for movement. But what is important to keep in mind is actually, there is the potential every year, the state changes the percent correct that gets you to approaches, MEETS, and Masters. They review that every year. So, when there are big movements in the state, it does end up impacting scores. So, it's not an excuse, it's a perspective to keep in mind that we really have to look at all the comparisons and where are we falling in line? Because sometimes the finish line moves or the hurdles are raised to a different height. So, that is what I'm calling attention to, not it could have been worse, but just we need to look at all of these comparisons. So, even with red, we absolutely are looking at that, but we need to give bigger attention to what is that big picture of what's happening? So, we saw more falls in math than we have seen previously. But you can see, we did have an increase in Masters at third grade. In fourth grade, math, that is not what we have seen before. So, we are definitely digging into that. We are looking into what are the districts, our comparison districts looking like. This is the first time we've seen region 11 be lower than the state average. And that happened in third, fourth, fifth, seventh, and eighth-grade math. And it's just very unusual. So, looking at resources, we're looking at interim assessments. We're looking at what happened differently this year? So, we'll be back with more information. We're just, you know, just now gleaning all the data and really digging into that. Did we have a particular grade level with a lot of zero-year teachers? Teachers new in a subject level? Was there something we could have done differently with training to support them and help them understand the curriculum? Because our curriculum didn't change from last year to this year. So, the curriculum that got those results and gains last year, and then, we had dips. So, what's going on? We're digging into all of that. Fifth grade, we saw drops across reading and math. Fifth grade science has dropped for the second year. So, of course, that, when we see two years in a row, we do want to give attention to that. Sixth grade, little mix at reading. We saw some nice gains at MEETS and Masters. Seventh grade, we typically don't see drops like that at seventh-grade math either. So, again, that was somewhere that's an anomaly with region 11 as well. So, we're looking to see, was there something all of us were doing differently? And what can we do to address that? Eighth grade, falling. I do always want to bring to mind that eighth-grade Masters should never be particularly high because if we have a lot of eighth graders performing at an advanced level, we missed them. They should have been in algebra. So, that number falling may mean we've actually placed more students correctly in algebra. But the approaches and MEETS, we don't need those falling. So, those are our performances. So, here's something that gives, one way to have some perspective is, I said, you know, there are areas where we fell and the state fell as well. So, I'm looking at that margin. If we were, you know, this far ahead of the state, are we still that far ahead of the state? Are they gaining on us? Have we lost ground, gained ground, et cetera? So, the yellow box is last year, our difference over the state. And there's also 2022 there if you want that for perspective. But I was looking at the FAR column. When you look at our difference, have we maintained or widened the gap? You can see in about half the areas, we are. We are not red compared to the state anywhere. So, I do want to say that. We have not fallen below the state. There are two spots where you will see we are even with the state, which we have not seen before. But we have not fallen below, but we need to concentrate on our leverage. What were we doing that got us to widen the gaps? And how come that wasn't working in other areas as well? What was going on with those areas? Because in fourth grade, we may, we didn't even maintain anywhere. We're still ahead of the state, but not like we're used to being. So, something is happening in fourth grade, and we saw it in MAP. Fifth grade, you can see really where our gains were at approaches. We were widening the gap. We did see that last year, Masters tended to be where we fell off with the new STAR 2.0 and the kind of reasoning that the students have to do in those problems. You may recall throughout the year last year, when I brought you interim data, we were, when I brought you DBA data last year, I was giving you examples of those STAR items. And really, the Masters can take a hit because with multi-point items, they get expensive. We saw widening over the state margin at sixth grade. Seventh grade, language arts everywhere. Language arts everywhere at eighth grade. And then, some in math and social studies everywhere. So, that's our preliminary look at STAR. I will definitely bring more data later. Questions?
Any questions on these STAR results?
Yes, Holly, I got a question. These are, you said these are preliminary, so these are not final scores then?
They are not final, they won't change much.
Change much.
They will not change much.
Did they change the bar from last year to this year?
I will have to go back and look case by case. What they do, they've frozen the scale scores for everything. But every year, they do, they issue a raw score conversion table where they decide this many questions correct equates to the scale score. And that can change. I have not found every, I've not looked at every margin, but I can get that for you.
What about the level of questioning, the types of question?
So, the types of questioning, I would, I can share with you some of the reports that I gave them last year in the 22, 23, when we went to STAR 2.0. Because I tried to really highlight for them the way the questions are changing, and it's significant. It really is. And that's why we feel like we saw the drops at Masters because we're good at getting our students to hear. We've got to keep pushing them here. But a student that was hitting Masters and then, suddenly, they have these new types of questions. They were, they were good and solid, but where they could previously show that outstanding performance, they aren't. And I'd be happy to go back and pull those PowerPoints and share them with you. Thank you, because they've got question examples. Anything else?
Any other questions?
All right, I got one more. It's short, five EOCs. Okay, because you know it's related to MEETS and Masters. Here is our trend data. Algebra, we climbed over last year's performance. The climb is small because we've about topped out. Biology at approaches, we had some upward movement. Meets and Masters fell slightly. U.S. history, can you believe from '97, we're just still climbing even from there? So, quite impressive. It's really hard when you're that high to continue to gain. But did see some small drops at Meets and Masters. English I and English II, we are seeing the movement we've been waiting for. Look, Meets and Masters, two years in a row of green arrows. So, that makes us happy. And for English II, they held their own and then, nice gains, especially at Meets. That English II has been kind of a puzzle for us in some years. So, when you look at our margins over the state where we maintained, almost all of these are double digits. So, it's hard to, you know, be terribly concerned. But we do watch when we're used to being this far out and someone is gaining on us. But particularly at English I and English II, we came in really strong and actually did improve our position compared to the state. So, that is what I have for you on EOC. There will be lots more to come with comparison districts. And I can get y'all a chart verifying which of any standards moved because it does change from year to year. So, I can get that for you.
Any questions? Yeah, I mean, I look forward to seeing the comparison districts. It's always very, you know, gives you a good perspective as to where exactly you're following.
Yeah, it's.
And what's going on. And the state numbers are useful, but of course, we always want to be way ahead of the state. You know, that's, that's the very floor for us. That's not, we don't even want to get close to there.
Absolutely. So, we will see some of those others and just as soon as they come in, we will, we will get them ready and share them with you.
Well, we look forward to the next time then.
Okay.
All right, 2024, 2025, ESA and THCY grant framework. Ms. Becker?
Good evening. This is a similar presentation to the one you saw last year, but we'll be looking at our grant funding for the ESA and TACY grants. So, as you know, Title I Part A focuses on how we support our children from low-income families and all of our kids at our identified 18 Title I elementary schools. And so, we have about 3.9 million in the planning amount that's been identified by TEA. And then, we'll get additional. It could go up, it could go down, but that's the amount we've been told to plan with from TEA at this point. So, about 80% of those funds are going to go to the Title I campuses. And we'll see in a minute how we'll use the 20% in the district reservation. But you can see at the Title I campuses, about 95% of that allocation goes to payroll, primarily our instructional specialist and our part-time instructional interventionist, also supporting our family engagement activities at campuses. And then, the remainder going to instructional books and materials for students, professional learning materials for staff, and any conference registration fees. Our district reservation is about 20% of the 3.9 million. And of that, about 80% goes to district payroll. And you'll see there are several coordinator positions that a portion of that position, for example, 25% of the coordinator of pre-kindergarten is funded through this district allocation. Also, several coordinator positions, federal programs positions, our McKinney-Vento advocates, the social workers that support our homeless students are funded through this grant as well. A very small amount, under 2,000. There's a formula that TEA has that tells us how much goes to the private nonprofit schools. And although the money does not go directly toward them, they have funds available for equitable services. And so, those funds are maintained by our district, and they have a fund request process to benefit Title I students that attend those private nonprofit schools. The remainder is used for contracted, third-party transportation, materials and supplies for professional development and conference registration fees. You'll also see some is allocated for indirect cost, which is the amount that the business office utilizes. You almost want to say to keep the lights on, to keep operations running. And so, this is the breakdown of the 3.9 million for Title I. Any questions on Title I? Okay, Title II looks at how do we Okay, Title II looks at how do we support the effectiveness of our teachers to increase student achievement? We have about 677,000. Over 90% of our Title II funds go to payroll. You see our district teacher facilitators are primarily funded through Title II as well as a portion of the coordinator of pre-kindergarten and our instructional technology specialist. Again, a small amount of Title II funding goes to private nonprofit schools, which includes their professional development costs, material and supplies, and conference registration, and then the remainder to indirect cost. Any questions on Title II? All right, Title III looks at English language acquisition. And then after this, we'll look at Title III for our immigrant students. So how do we support our English learners and our emergent bilingual students in the district? Of the 477,000 in Title III, about 90% of that goes to payroll. It helps support four district teacher facilitators, a bilingual family engagement liaison, our federal programs and LPAC data specialist, family engagement specialist, as well as supplemental pay for the adult ESL classes we do to engage our families and community, learning the English language. The remainder of the funds goes to contracted professional development, materials and supplies for our English language learners, and conference registration and indirect cost. We also have Title III immigrant funds again this year. We did not have this funding last year, but we do have it again this year. It's about 75,000. And about 90% of this, we're looking at designating to payroll for our family engagement specialist, as well as any supplemental duty pay with the remainder supporting our immigrant students with materials and supplies and any training and registration fees. Questions on Title III? Title IV supports three areas, the well-rounded education, safe and healthy schools, and technology use. So out of this, we have about 294,000, where over 90% goes to payroll. And it supports not 100% of the positions, but a portion of each of the positions you see listed. It's our coordinator of world languages, our crisis intervention team, and student information specialist, with a small amount going to contracted mental health support, material supplies, conference registration, and indirect cost. Questions on Title IV or the ESA application allocations before I move to TACY? All right, so this is our Texas Education for Homeless Children and Youth. And it's how do we support students who are identified in our district experiencing homelessness? This year, we're expecting about 68, 69,000, where over 90% of that will go to payroll, supporting a portion of three salaries of our McKinney-Vento advocates. And any remaining funds supporting with materials and supplies, conference registration, and indirect cost. And you can see the breakdown on TACY here. Do you have any questions?
Any questions on these reports?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. All right, 11.08, end-of-year safety and security report. Mr. Phelps?
Good evening, everyone. All right, thank you very much. So this is just going to be a quick overview of where we are on the authorizations that I asked for in October two years ago and the state requirements that have come out. So I just really wanted to give you guys an overview on how we're progressing. Most of these are things that we asked for, wanted to let you know we are. We did move forward with the new camera software that is implemented on nine campuses right now. We've purchased several, I think, eight new servers for those. The rest of the campuses will be transferred over during the summer. So when the fall session starts, we will be on the new camera software system, which now that I've been able to get in and use it, and some of the administrators have, we really, really like the system that we picked out. The new cameras that are coming, the RFP for that will be out this summer. But we have been able to upgrade numerous projects on five different campuses because of some of the grant money that came in last year. So we've got those out. It looks like at this point that we're going to need around an additional 507 to 520 cameras that will be coming in on the RFP. The motorola radios, all of the campuses are complete. Those have been issued to all of the schools except for one, and those were in processing this week. So they'll be delivered in the next two weeks. Fencing at elementaries, we have successfully completed every elementary that is not currently listed as a construction project coming up through the bond. So hopefully, as you've been out and around the district, that you have seen the fencing from my end. It's made a huge difference to know that people can't cut across our elementaries anymore. So we're working on gates and how that's going to look for some of those. But it's moving very quickly. Maintenance has done an incredible job with getting that implemented. 3M safety film, again, we have successfully implemented what the state has asked around the, all of our exterior doors and windows that are at a certain height. We will be continuing to expand that over the summer as well. So maintenance is working on that. Raptor emergency management, as you know, and there will be a few slides after this, but that has been implemented. We did have a little bit of a holdback of getting that rolled out just because of IT, RIT, talking with the Raptor system, but we were able to work all of that through. And then emergency mapping and repeater towers. I walked 22 campuses last week with the mapping group and got all my steps in for the month. But we do have a great digital mapping system coming out for our first responders. The good thing about this is that will go into the camera systems as well. It'll be very easy to maneuver through and see where the cameras are placed on the new digital mapping system for our administrators. And then our first responders will be able to pull that up within the 911 dispatch center. SRO update, really don't have a whole lot to say on that because you guys know where we are. But we did have a meeting with the city officials, the city managers, and the chiefs of police about six weeks ago. We were able to draft up. The benefit of having the city managers there was huge. I think Dr. Joe and I, we talked afterwards, their input on some, on being able to come up with more creative solutions that their chiefs were unaware of how those things worked. So we have sent a draft over, and we're working with all of the cities on that currently. I expect answers hopefully by midsummer on the end on job postings. Metal detectors, which were purchased last year as well. We're getting ready for the fall with that. We did start doing trial sessions out on some of the secondary campuses. Like I said, when I presented these to you, I never foresee or want an issue where we're scanning everybody coming into a school. But doing random checking has been a huge help. So what we've done is set up on several of our campuses, just going in two or three times a month and setting up random checks. And they were able to pull them out of class, goes very quickly. But in conjunction with hopefully another drug dog company coming in next year, the way that they work, we're going to do those at the same time that we do these. And I think that that'll be a huge help. It's been, it's been gone very well on the campuses. Raptor stats, you guys can quickly read through those. But we started in January. All of our campuses have Raptor now. Lot of numbers, 365 visitors, 48,000 students and 3,800 staff members. So we are getting everybody into the habit of using Raptor and have been able to get the glitches out, like I said, and get that fixed with IT. And then with our volunteer system this year, as you guys saw at the volunteer banquet, that we were able to really get that kicked off, and that has helped tremendously. So for, just wanted to give you guys a quick screenshot of what this is going to look like. This is what our assistant principals and our principals next year are. I put in all this information this year because they didn't, I didn't want them having to worry about how it was working when it was being implemented. But this is what their screens will look like. And at any point, we can pull up and see which campuses are in compliance, who may have missed a drill, how we get that back on track. So this is a great system for me. It takes away the Google Forms. We can print out reports from the state on this every time and keep them, let the state know exactly where we are. Skip that one. So for threat assessment, I just want to let you guys know, we did send the threat team, our crisis team and our threat team, to three different trainings this year, put on by the Secret Service. I feel very confident and proud of what we're doing with our threat team across the district. A lot of districts have come to us and started asking us questions of how we're doing our program because it's been very successful. Most school districts have gone to individual campus threat assessment, so they have separate teams on every campus. And what we're seeing from that is there's not consistency across the board of what we're looking at. So our team is being able to look at every single case that comes in, and we know how we're working those across the district, and we've had huge success with it. The thing that, that came out of the Secret Service conferences that we really are pushing, and I know Mr. Cargill has talked about it. I've talked about it before. But it's this interrupting the pathways to violence. How do we catch things early in our students, knowing that if there's a, if there's four or five steps that they're going to take before something really bad happens, that we have the opportunity to intervene? And that's, that's what we saw last year when we started the program. And then this year, we really saw a lot of success with that. I'll let you look through the cases. One thing that I'm proud of that we've done, that other districts are asking about, is we started this last year. We did an end-of-the-year threat meeting with all of our local police departments, and we handed off our active cases to the mental health officers. So they are actively checking with our students over the summer. And at the end of the summer, before school year starts, they will hand those back to us at the next meeting. So pretty cool because the relationships that we have is very unique. Any questions?
Dan, so I have a quick question. You tested out the open gate at three campuses.
Yes, sir.
Did anything materialize or?
Yes. You know, what was, what was fun is just to kind of play with the settings. And, you know, if you're, if you're looking for specific items, you can, you can lower it down to basically a courthouse setting. If you're looking for the type of screening that we will do at Pennington and our sporting events, we can ramp it up. So really gave us a lot of ability to do some specific interventions.
Excellent.
I did want to give you all a big thank you on the random intruder audits this year. So we did, we had no failures after February 1st. I did have the investigator that does the audits come and talk to me at the end of the year. And she said, I want you to know, two years ago, Trinity High School was probably the scariest campus security-wise that I've ever seen. And there's no other five-day or six-day high school now that has a fence all the way around it. And she said, it's now my favorite campus to go to. So that was a huge, and thank you guys for making that investment because it has made a huge difference for us.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Dan. 11.09, website update. Ms. Holender?
Thank you. I have invited Dave Nielsen to come and share the details, but we are doing a website switch. What I want you to know is this is not something that we decided to do. It was the buyout of the company that already, that the platform that we already had. So we went to Blackboard, and Blackboard has been bought out by Final Site. But what we wanted to do is take advantage of this opportunity and turn our website into more of a marketing tool. So Dave is going to walk you through some things, and I want to compliment him. He has worked very hard all year long. We knew this was coming in the fall, and he's been working with the campuses. So I want to thank him for his work. Dave?
Excellent. Well, as Deanne said, this is kind of a website update. We are moving to a new platform because we were using Blackboard. They got purchased by Final Site. And having worked with the Final Site and Blackboard platforms, I kind of knew that they would probably want to sunset the platform that we were on. So we were in a good position to, to kind of work with them and say, here's what we're looking for if we're going to continue with y'all. And we're in a good place. So we've been working with Final Site throughout this year. And we were, we've been working with staff. We've been getting input from ELT. We're always getting needs assessments and opportunities with our current website. But one of the big things for us moving forward is shown on this data from our, this is from our Fall 2023 Parent and Community Survey. Parents keep telling us that the district is doing an amazing job of sending the information parents need when they need to have it. So if you're doing returning student registration this summer, you get emailed exactly what you need. And that means that parents are placing a lower priority on what is posted online because we're sending what they need when they need it. The flip side is that these groups that may not have that strong, constant connection like a current parent, they are still relying a lot on the website for just looking for information and things like that. And we really want to capture that as a marketing opportunity, as a first impression for prospective parents. So even while we're trying to keep things pretty stable with the website through this transition, we wanted to take advantage of some opportunities in that regard. So again, keeping things consistent, minimizing disruption, and shifting that thinking from the website as this infinite filing cabinet to the website being first impressions and marketing. And we actually, we have screenshots of the website here. But if you'll indulge me and not, not point out too much stuff if things aren't looking exactly how they're supposed to. Let's see if it'll load. So we do actually have kind of a live demo of our website. And this is the same as what the screenshots show. So minimizing disruption, you'll see across the top, these are the same navigation headings that we have now. So these power users who know where the things are that they want to find, the navigation is the same structure. We didn't rebuild everything behind the scenes. So that should help keep disruption down low there. But then, once we get beyond that, you see, we're really focused on using some powerful imagery, both on the district sites and the school sites, with school-specific images to really give the impression of the amazing things that are happening in the district. So we start with that. I'm going to scroll down through this homepage. The school homepages look very similar, but with school colors and logos. One of our non-negotiables was to keep these icons. So you picture when someone calls an office and they say, how do I get to this information? Having these icons has been a key thing to direct people. But once we get past those non-negotiables, we wanted to bring the calendar up a little bit higher than where it has been before. So we're calendar events, district events, and we're looking at how to allow the arts, VPA, and athletic departments to use their expertise and kind of surface some of these big events. So that's the things that they know people should be interested in, that they want to get more attention on, but also the things that they know people may be coming to and they may not know exactly where to find that information. This is one more way they'll be able to elevate that event information. We need to have a space for news and announcements. There's a familiar face there. What Final Site lets us do that we can't do real easily now is we can, we can post news without or with a picture. And that's been kind of messy with our current system. So the TEA required postings, no pictures. We can post them, but when we have a smiling face, we can do a little marketing there for the district. And this next feature, it is on the district homepage, but I am going to actually be brave, and we're going to jump to one of the school sites. So we also get a little look at this. So you see the same idea, school colors though, and school logo, and then we can have school graphics. The school sites will look similar to the district site. And then this buy the numbers feature, probably my personal favorite. We have the numbers as a district to show that we are doing amazing things. So I like when we can weave in a couple numbers somewhere. But I keep thinking of this part, we're kind of hitting them in the head with the numbers and hitting them in the heart with some more pictures. I just, this is my favorite part of the homepage. And then a footer on all the pages. And I just want to show y'all one of the internal pages. A lot of districts, not a lot, some districts do not do website transitions during the summer, but that's worked really well for our district in the past. And the reason some districts choose not to is because of registration. So we are always very mindful that registration is happening. We need these links to be working throughout the different parts of the registration process. As I say that, let's make sure, okay, good. The links are working as part of the registration process. But this is just an example also of what an internal page might look like. And we can do, we may have more pages listed on the left. We can add images and things here. But just wanted to give y'all some insight. This is coming kind of midsummer, and we're aiming to minimize disruption while leaning in on that, that marketing and first impression opportunity.
All right, any questions?
Thank you.
David, it looks really good. And I know we're moving away from parents using it as more of a community. Will there be, and I only think specifically about the IB students and teachers, individual pages for certain classes, or is that kind of going away?
The, when we get down to that kind of classroom level and individual activities, those are not happening as much on this website system. So this, within the scope of this is the district website and the department websites and school websites. When I start to think about individual programs, I think of the Canvas and Google Sites and things which are, we link to, but.
Got it.
Yep, yep.
Looks good.
Thank you.
I want to add one more thing, and I thought of it, I'm sorry, David. And one of the things we talked about, and Dr. Harrington and I talked about, was on the marketing side for parents and the community, is putting some pictures of our administrators online so that there is a familiar face when they walk onto a campus. And so we're going to be doing that for departments and campuses. So that is something that, you know, it's going to take a little while to gather all of the photos. But that was something that we felt like was very customer service focused.
So one thing that I've noticed and just in, I think it's been the last few months, that when you Google H E B I S D, that's how I usually hit our website, it comes up with the Final Site logo instead of our logo or, and it's the Final Site logo next to H E B I S D. And it just seems weird. When I first saw it, I thought someone had stolen our website or something. That's not us.
I will, I will take a closer look, but one thing I've noticed is through that acquisition, they've, I don't want to say a messy job, but they know that the old system is going away. So they're kind of trying to introduce their Final Site branding and they're not, they're not adding new features or anything like that to the Blackboard platform right now. So I'm guessing that's part of what you're seeing. But in terms of the icon that you see up at the top when you're on our new website, the, the FAVICON kind of things, we have control of those. So we should be able to have a district graphic there, especially once we roll into this, the newer ongoing system.
Yeah, once you're on the site, it's all fine. It's just, it seems weird when you look at the Google listings and it just has the, the long logo there.
Interesting.
Very good. All right, any other questions? Thank you, sir. All right, we have a long list of action items, so let's get started. No items were removed from consent agenda, so twelve point zero two, consider approval of update to the 2024-2025 staffing table, new units.
I move to approve the new units as submitted.
Second. I have a motion, a second, to approve the new units as submitted. Please vote.
You said move along, Phil.
And that motion passes. Twelve point zero three, consider approval of revisions to board policy, D E C local compensation and benefits, leaves and absences.
So similar to the previous items, this is our localized policy and so it does require board approval. And you've reviewed the revisions and they are specific to the number of days and the addition of explaining the new types of leave. Any questions?
Any questions on this revised policy? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board to approve the revised board policy, D E C local as submitted.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the revisions to the board policy, D E C local as submitted. Please vote. And that motion passes. Ty, can you move the, the cursor down a little so it's not popped up there? All right. Item twelve point zero four, consider approval of revisions to board policy, C D A local.
So from time to time, our investors do make recommendations of updating this policy. And Mr. Williams will explain in the next item, the relevance of that as it relates to our investment strategies. But these are specific revisions made to this policy based on our investors.
Any questions on the revision? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board to approve the revisions to board policy, C D A local as submitted.
D E C local.
My second.
What did I say?
C D.
C D A.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the revisions to board policy, D E C local as submitted. Please vote.
He was right.
I was right.
It's in two different, well, I'm on the wrong one.
Yeah.
Okay. And that motion passes. Twelve point zero five, consider approval of investment policy and strategies as part of the annual review. Mr. Williams?
Okay, as Cicely alluded to, it's not a redundancy, well, it isn't a redundancy, but it's not a duplication that you're seeing C D A come back. Since you just approved the change to the policy, we are now, as we're required each year, the board must review and our per C D A legal and public funds investment act, the board must review our annual investment policy, which we just changed a little bit slightly. There's redlined copy in there that you can see what changes were made. Those are, changes are made mainly to accommodate some longer term investments due to our long ongoing construction projects and investment of those funds. So we are asking that you review that, review the policy and, and approve it.
All right. Any questions on this, on this item? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board to approve the investment policy and strategies as, as part of the annual review.
Second.
Sorry, I'm trying to get on the right item. It's not switching. All right. I have a, a motion, a second, that the board approved the investment policy and strategies as part of the annual review. Please vote. And that motion passes. Twelve point zero six, consider approval of schematic design presentation for seventeen oh one West Yules Boulevard. Mr. Miner?
Good evening. Just go ahead and I'll do an introduction to the Huckabee team. They're going to be doing the presentation for you guys this evening.
All right, good evening. As you know me, I'm Aubrey Moses. Along with me is Connor Wade with Core, the construction manager on this project. And Erin Evans is the project architect for Huckabee. So she's the one actually into the documents and the nitty gritty details. So she will actually be back on my behalf in January for the next update because I'll be out of town. So I wanted to make sure you all saw her face and remembered who she was. But for tonight, like Josh said, this is schematic design. So this is our first milestone in this project. We've had a series of design meetings with all of the leadership that will be housed in this building as long as, as, as well as the safety, security team. They've been part of those meetings as well. And closed closet and family engagement, some of those other programs that'll be moving in, some in this phase, some in future phases, have all been part of the discussion. So we've got a lot of input that has led to the project where it is today. This narrative is here for your reference, but I'll talk through a lot of the, the items here. And then as always, we've included a program of spaces that I won't go into the details. But again, this is the list of spaces that all of the different programs have requested and that we've accommodated. All in here color coded by types of space. And this also includes the Phase Two programs after Keys High School moves out into their permanent home. So we're definitely taking into consideration both the current phase and the future phase and trying to design smartly so that minimizes rework in the future. I'm going to start with the site plan. So West Yules Boulevard or Highway ten is on the top side of the screen. And then the building is situated pretty close there with just a little bit of parking on the north side. Your bulk of your parking is on your south side. So all of that is going to maintain its current layout, not doing a lot of reconfiguration to the site. But what we are doing where you see notes number two is adding new entrances on the north and the south end that include vestibules and stair towers. Those of you that have walked that building, the existing stairwells are not code compliant in any way. And so the city is requiring that we replace those. And I really think that that helps with the overall flow and function of this building. And so that's what that represents. And so along with that, beside that note number three, we're doing new plazas in the north and the south to help accommodate the students that are coming and being dropped off here, make sure they've got enough room for drop off and pickup. The dash lines actually represent the flow of those drop off and pickup times. And so the blue line is the secondary D A P in Keys High School, both parent and bus loops. But the buses are very minimal at this campus. And then the gold line is the elementary D A P. So they will all be dropping off on the north side. And when we get to the floor plan, you'll see why, that there's a designated student vestibule here. All of these drop offs do not occur at the same time. So each, each of these three programs has unique drop off times. So they're not all, elementary and secondary and keys are not all commingling. And then your public entrance will be on the south side. That's the purple line for that visitor parking area. And so again, that will make more sense when we get to the, the floor plan. Also on the south side, you'll see some modifications with ramps and stairs. That entrance is not currently handicap accessible, so we've had to make some modifications there. So you're losing a little bit of parking, but not significant. And I really think this will improve the, the entrance sequence here. And then finally, at the bottom of the site plan is notes number four and five, is the dumpster enclosure and transformer enclosure. We are having to relocate the transformer right now. It's located right up against the building, which does not meet current codes. It's also in the way of the addition that we're doing on the south side. So it is being moved and then the city is requiring a dumpster enclosure per current ordinance. Questions on the site plan? Okay, moving into the, the floor plan, just to give you a quick overview, like I said, new stair towers and entry vestibules on the north and the south. We've called out the, who is entering where? So just going to start there, on the north end is where you see the seventh through twelfth grade entrance into that new vestibule. And then they have their own designated student lobby here that is still within a secured area with this pair of doors here. So they'll do their metal detectors and various check in procedures that these, these programs have. And then the elementary students, there's an existing door over here on the east side and they will drop off here and, and come in and they will hold here in what is being shown as a P E and multipurpose space. And that staff will bring all of those students up at the same time to their classrooms. So they will use the same stairs here on the north side of the building. But just remember, elementary and secondary are not dropping off at the same time. And so also behind this secured door here is the servery where lunches will be dropped off. For these students, food will be prepared offsite and then brought here. And so the secondary students will come down, pick up their lunches and go right back up to their classrooms. The elementary students staff will come down and pick up their lunches for them. And then the other thing on this side of the secure door is access to the clinic for all programs. So this is designated student lobby will not be open to the public. So public and students cannot mix through that with this door here. I'm going to jump to the south entrance now and then we'll work through the spaces in the middle. So south entrance is your visitor entrance. That's why I was saying we're adding stairs and ramp just to meet the handicap accessibility. And I think this, when you look at the exterior renderings, this will help improve that entrance look as well. And we put this on the south side mostly because that's where the bulk of your parking is. So whether this be auditorium is professional development, whether it be public coming in for closed closet, family engagement services, future things that this building may hold. Putting it next to the parking made a lot of sense. It does turn it away from Highway ten, so we will be paying attention to the aesthetic of the building and how to draw people through there, as well as with signage and wayfinding on the site to make sure that the public knows that the main entrance is on the south side.
What is the square footage of the closed closet in this picture compared to what they have right now?
It is very close to comparable. Very, if anything, it might be slightly less than what they have today, but it's all in one space and not spread out between a portable building and multiple small spaces within the other building that they have. So this should be a more efficient use of space for them.
I have a question about elevator. I see elevators over here.
Yes.
Is that the only elevator? So how do the students that are handicapped, do they have to come around there to use that elevator?
Yeah, so if, if there is an instance like that, it will be isolated event that operationally the staff will have to give them access to those elevators on the south side.
Okay.
Yes, those are existing elevators and so we're maintaining that. And we didn't see a, a reason with the size of this building to do the investment of a, an additional elevator. So when you go into the south entrance, like I said, this is the public entrance. You will have a reception desk there. And then the truancy secretary and truancy officers will operate out of this front area. And the S R O office also has a space there with a window where they can oversee that public entrance and easily have access to stairs and elevator to get to any, any students should, anything occur on the upper levels. Also on the first floor is an existing auditorium that's in green on the right. We are modifying the limits of that space a little bit. If those of you that have been there, you know, there's kind of that triangular ramp that go out on either side kind of flare out and there's a lot of unusable space. So we are straightening those walls out, filling in the slab and modifying the ramp and stair access. And so that really gives us a lot more usable space for those truancy offices on the south side and for that P E multipurpose space on the north side. And then the P E space is for yoga and simple exercise type classes for Keys High School and elementary D A P. And when it's not being used by them, it can be a conference space or really whatever you all need it to be during whatever hour of the day. All of those gray spaces in the middle, the existing men's and women's restrooms, they are existing and they will remain. We're not redoing any finishes or fixtures. They're in good condition there. The mechanical, electrical and M D F, which is the technology closet, those are close to their same spaces. Like the electrical room is in the same space, but we are growing it out. There's a lot of kind of nooks and crannies in that area that we're just kind of cleaning up those spaces and making them more usable for those. Yeah, yeah. We are adding staff restrooms on each side, just outside of those multi-user restrooms. And that is on every floor. And then like you all noticed already, closed closet is moving in here. And we initially thought there would not be space for them until Phase Two, but we are able to get them in here in Phase One, so they are not having to move twice. They'll be able to move straight from F E W Keys High School building into the space. We have met with them as well, got them, understand their storage needs and their process of intake and checkout and all of those things. Dressing rooms, laundry rooms. So we think that we have met all of their needs and they're pretty excited to have this space. I'm going to move up to the second floor. So this is going to be the Keys High School floor in the interim while other buildings are under construction as part of the bond program. And so they definitely have smaller class sizes here. They're probably between four hundred, four hundred and fifty square feet. So a little over half of your average class, classroom size. But they serve a maximum of ten students. And so this, they are sized for the number of students that they serve. Keys High School principal is comfortable with the space that they'll be able to operate in here. And so they have the number of classrooms that they need, the two multipurpose classrooms in the right side are a little bit larger and that will serve their art and science needs. We will be adding some sinks and some cabinets in there, but not to a huge extent. So we know, since we know this is a temporary home for them. And then in the bottom right is their BIM classroom. That will be a computer lab that is their largest space, is the one space that has more than ten students. And then in the center is their admin spaces. So while the student entrance is coming from the north, if there's ever any parents or meetings or anything, they'd be using that public entrance on the south, so they can come up those stairs or those elevators and be right there at that reception and attendance office that does have glass all the way across it and can oversee those entry points. And then reusing the existing restrooms and building support spaces there in gray in the center. So this is Phase One. This next sheet here is Phase Two. And we have met with family engagement and social workers and walked through their existing spaces. And this is what this could look like should they come into this space where Keys is, is currently or will be. And we have maintained the existing workroom and the existing conference room from Keys High School, not having to do any changes there. The, what we're showing is a waiting room for them, again, right off of the stairs and elevator. It's just reconfiguring one, one of those offices and a storage room, I think, to function for that. And then adding a couple of doors and a. And then adding a couple of doors in different locations for those storage spaces, uh, for phase two. So very little wall reconfiguration there. We will be taking out some walls on the right side, um, where those Kees classrooms and storage rooms were, uh, for the, for these offices to flow better. But again, it's, it's just those demising walls between those spaces, a very minimal scope here. And then everything that you see in white, um, is undefined. So you all get to define that, uh, whether it's professional development, whether it's offices or some other needs should you see in the future that space is still available in phase two.
And then just for clarification, there, there will be, some of those office spaces will, I mean, will be needed immediately. Uh, so there, there may be some space that could be defined for professional development. But, uh, there are, uh, we have, uh, people doubled up and we have some people we, uh, officing in less than normal office space right now. So the moment that becomes available, while we haven't defined who's going, uh, many of them will be occupied immediately.
Okay, and then the third floor is DAEP programs. We are showing elementary and secondary DAP all on the same floor. Um, we have talked to those programs at length, talked to safety and security group at length to make sure that there is separation between those programs even while they're, um, on a common level here. And so I'm gonna start with the elementary on the right side. You'll see there's three classrooms there. They have their cool down and storage spaces. Um, we've also created restrooms that are designated just for the elementary, uh, students and staff on that side. And then in the hallways, you'll see there's a pair of doors on the south side and there's another pair of doors at the, um, corridor on the northeast corner that will, um, be locked and have access control to separate those programs. There is a flex classroom here in the middle and you'll see there is a door to both elementary and secondary DAP sides. Depending on the population of those programs, you know, they fluctuate from time to time. Whoever might have the greatest need can use that space. Uh, and then, you know, if elementary needs it for a few weeks and then their numbers go back down, then maybe secondary can move in there for a little while. Again, those doors will have access control, so there's not free access between the elementary and secondary programs. Uh, and then the admin spaces there in the middle in orange. Um, you'll also see the workroom has shared access between both. Those, uh, doors will also be controlled to limit access to staff only. And then the secondary DAEP classrooms wrap the top left and then the, uh, bottom left. Uh, you'll also see on the left side, a nurse's landing spot. That's for the nurse to be able to come up from the clinic to this level, disperse medication or, you know, do some of those daily tasks just from a little landing spot on this floor. And then the restrooms, um, we have flipped the entrances. At the other levels, you probably saw the women's restroom entrance was, uh, going into that south corridor and the men's and the north corridor. Uh, that didn't allow for good oversight of these restrooms. And so by moving these entrances over to the west side, that gives one staff member the ability to supervise both of those restrooms at the same time. Um, we have not had to relocate any fixtures, uh, so this is, this is just main, um, updating access only.
Aubrey? On the back of the principal and secretary's wall, what is chase?
That's a mechanical chase, so you'll have ducks and things like that running through there.
Dr. Harrington, did we ever consider flipping who was on which floor? I'm only asking because you're moving, um, elementary DAP kids up three flights of stairs and Kees kids only up, do you, does, is that making sense? Is that a question that's making sense?
Yeah, a- at the end of the day, we were looking at the final location. And the final location, when we're all done, by leaving them on the third floor, it keeps the first and second floor available because, yeah, that, they'll be, well, we've got the testing, the adults coming in and bringing students in for testing. That'll be going on on the second floor and then first floor with the closed closet. So the idea was where we could keep the, uh, students that are staying their per, the permanent home on, would be that third floor, would, we thought would be the best place for them. We had originally started with them on the first floor, but as we went through possible interruptions and, and everything, it really became clear that the third floor would be probably the best spot.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and then lastly, we have the fourth floor. We are trying to keep renovations minimal here, uh, but this floor will be staff only. By building code and just practically, um, we cannot have students on this, this floor. So this will be, uh, their lounge for all programs, shared space here, as well as some overflow workroom spaces because the workrooms are small on DAP's level. And so this gives them a little bit more space here. Uh, the, the kitchen will remain that's there right now and they can use that. We will be taking out the, uh, range for code reasons. We don't want to have to bring in, uh, special sprinkler system and hood and all of that. And most teachers' lounges in the district do not have a range anyway. So we'll be taking that out. Uh, the biggest change is probably in that upper left corner. Um, there's a large restroom there now. We're gonna be taking that out and creating a handicap accessible restroom and a laundry space for Kees High School up there. Uh, and then the space on the right, we are turning into a conference room. Uh, and then we are connecting both stair towers to this space as well. So there will be a little bit of work on the roof making those connections. Any questions on floor plans?
I think we're good.
Okay. Moving to the exterior, this is the south entrance, so this is the main entrance of the building. Uh, right now, it is a blank canvas. It is all painted white. Uh, and so we're maintaining the white panels kind of in between the, uh, sections of windows, but we're painting the ribbon around the perimeter and then between the sections of windows, an accent gray, just kind of break up the mass a little bit. Also showing the elevator shaft, uh, tower on the right painted as well. Uh, the addition itself, the stair tower and entry vestibule is, uh, a darker metal panel color, uh, around the edges. A lighter metal panel color in the middle where you see the, um, building signage. And then the little pop of green there as well, just to kind of bring the district color in and make it a little bit more identifiable. Uh, you will see the, um, canopy outside of the entrance, uh, to help with pickup, drop off, even though this is more the public side, but still offers a little bit of protection there. And then you will see the, um, stairs and ramps and the railing added here at the front as well. So it really looks like it's a little built up and a little more prominent now, even though it hasn't, hasn't moved spots at all. Um, we are limiting the landscaping scope to just this entrance here. Any other landscaping improvements will be done by the district in-house. And then this is the north side, again, stair tower looks very different. So this is what will be facing highway 10. And so what we wanted to do here is make sure, try to make this not look as much like the main entrance. Obviously, the stair tower is gonna be similar on both sides. But you'll notice the, um, the vestibule to the left, that solid metal panel, the doors are turned around to the side. So as you're looking at this building, driving past it, you're not seeing that front door. Uh, and then the drop off canopy there extends out to the left. So students that are waiting to enter this building, um, are protected. There will also be another small canopy around the corner where the elementary DAEP students will enter. From a schedule standpoint, like I said, we're at schematic design right now. Um, if this is approved tonight, we will continue straight into design development and be back to present an update to you all in July with all of the materials and finishes like we typically do. Completing construction documents late September. And then doing permitting and bidding through October and November. Hopefully bringing to you a GMP for approval at the November board meeting so that Core can get started, uh, for, around the first of December. The goal will be to be complete late summer of '25, get everybody moved in right before school starts. Uh, and then we can begin the construction on Bell Manor as soon as, um, this is complete. Lastly, um, Connor is here and can help talk to the cost standpoint. But wanted to let you know, we are sitting at 15.4 million, uh, construction. Total project cost around 19.3. This is, um, around $3.6 million more than the original budget that was proposed for phase one of this project, which was 11.8. Um, so we know that that is a significant increase. So I want to explain kind of where those major differences are. Um, that estimate was put together after the, uh, at the time you all were acquiring the property, so just off an initial sidewalk. Uh, since then, the full consultant team has gotten in there and found, um, a lot more electrical work needs to be done as far as replacing some electrical panels, like we said, relocating the transformer. Uh, some plumbing costs are just kind of unknown right now until we get into the project. And so Core has definitely, um, put some allowances in there to cover for that. And hopefully, the more we find out, hopefully that number can come down, but we just want to make sure we're cognizant of that. Uh, and then as far as scope changes, we originally were not touching the auditorium at all. Uh, but we think the investment of reconfiguring those ramps, um, gives you a lot more space on both sides of that auditorium. So you can get, maximize your use of this building. Replacing the lighting and AV systems in that auditorium to meet district standards as well will improve that building function for you all long-term. What am I forgetting? Is that the big stuff? Okay. And the, yes, thank you. Uh, and then phase, uh, the fourth floor as well was not in the scope. And you can see, while we're trying to keep it minimal, there is some scope up there as well, um, just to make that usable. So while phase one is more expensive, um, phase two, as you can see, it's very minimal wall and door reconfiguration. And that's in the ballpark of 300,000 is what we're anticipating. And initially, when we thought we were reconfiguring all of phase two, or floors two and three in the future, that was another seven to eight million dollars. So while we're three and a half million over in phase one, we are a net gain for the project as a whole when you look at phase one and phase two collectively. I also want you to be aware, there's four alternates there listed at the bottom of the screen. These are not in the base bid scope, but these are items that we would hope to be able to do if the budget allowed. And that would be to replace the carpet seating and curtains in that auditorium. Right now, those are red. So, bright red. Yes, but we know that that's not critical to the use of the building. And so that's an, that's an easy one to come in and do at any time. Uh, the exterior window replacement, this would be for floors one through three. We might be required to do this for building code. We haven't, our energy code, we have not run those calc's yet. Uh, but we want to have that number there in case that is required. Uh, and then on the fourth floor, there's some sliding doors up there, um, that you could choose to replace if you wanted to. They function, it just depends on what type of function you want at that level. Uh, and then the last price would be to recoat the asphalt at the parking lot, um, if you would like to do that. So those items are not in the base bid, but additional options for you. Right. Anything to add? All right, any questions?
All right, any questions?
So just for clarification purposes, alt one through four, the 803, 830,000 is not included in the total project cost?
Correct, those would be added on top.
Okay. And then, you know, maybe my math is wrong, but I see the estimated total at 15,458,000 plus overage of 36, 3 million. It gives me to 19.1 million. Where am I missing 200,000?
The total project cost doesn't have anything to do with those numbers.
Oh, okay, okay.
I could have put a whole lot more detail in here to show you how it to the total project cost, but, but that's all your fees and permits and furniture. This does still include a furniture package. So if you wanted to save money there, if there's furniture to be reused, you know, there, there are savings to be had there.
All right, and we're not necessarily approving the budget tonight. We're, we're approving it schematically, so it's important to keep an eye on.
Yep.
All right, any, any other questions on the schematic design? All right, I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board approve the schematic design for 1701 West Yules Boulevard as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in second for the board to approve the schematic design for 1701 West Yules Boulevard as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. Thank you, Aubrey.
All right, 12.07, consider approval of financial statements for the month of April 2024. Mr. Williams.
Okay, I'm back. Gonna stay here a while this time. Okay, we're gonna be looking at the, uh, financial statements for the month ending August, uh, August, April 30th, 2024. That's really getting ahead of myself. Let's see. So start with the general fund. We have a fund balance of 199, 256, 245. That represents revenues over expenditures of 28,060,059. Uh, investment interest, uh, which we've kind of been tracking is, uh, for this reporting period was 5,019,763 compared to last year's investment earnings for the same time period of 3,914,254. And at, as of the, uh, end of April, we were at 62.92% of the budget. So we're well within our, uh, where we want to be. So the fund is doing, general fund is performing as expected. Excuse me. Put my glasses on. Trying to do it without it, but I just can't. Okay, so, uh, looking at the, uh, general fund expenditure matrix. 23 bonds, or 2024 bonds that were just issued. So instead of spending down our debt service fund with a defeasance, we're just spending it down like we do with other debt service payments. CK pre-K fund, fund balance of 572,133. That's revenues over expenditures, 382,657. Uh, we, as of the end of April, we received 97.13% of the budgeted revenues and they were at 57.73% of the budget, so they are performing as expected also. Special revenue funds, uh, they, at, at April 30th, they were at 46.41%, but as I've said every month, those funds, uh, we roll a lot of those funds over so that those numbers tend to look a little skewed from month to month. Uh, and we do also have a lag in revenues due to, uh, the reimbursements from the state, which is tip, totally normal. But all those funds are operating as they should. Campus activity funds, we have a fund balance of 3,406,73. That's revenues over expenditures, 69,390. For the period, the revenues increased by three hundred and eight thousand while their expenditures increased by two hundred and eleven thousand for the reporting period. So they kind of shifted back the other way and raised a little more money than they spent. But overall, that fund is performing as, as expected. Twenty eighteen bond fund, one of these days, we'll get rid of this. But for now, we're still waiting on the invoices to come in, so we can get those paid. And as soon as those are paid, we will close this fund out. But we still have a fund balance of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And of course, it's, it's all outgo. There's no revenue other than a little bit of interest earnings that come into that account. The twenty twenty-four bond, we have a fund balance of five hundred and eighty-five million, two hundred and thirteen thousand, six sixty-four. Of course, that's a big chunk of the revenues there was the influx of, from the bond sale. So revenues over expenditures in the amount of five hundred and eighty-six million, six thirty-five, three sixty-seven. We issued, as you know, back in February and received the bond funds in late March. And then we have moved monies around. We've, the investment, or the reimbursement resolution that the board approved, we have moved those monies back, which will be reflected in, on the locally defined, which we'll talk about here in a second. Worth, worth mentioning, we made three million, one twenty-four, six ten in interest earnings since receiving the twenty twenty-four bond proceeds in March. So... And locally defined capital projects fund, have a fund balance of thirty million, seven twenty-nine, zero zero one. That's, represents expenditures over revenues in the amount of sixteen million, six thirteen, seven fifty-four. Of course, these funds are being used to finish off Bel Air, and then these upcoming facility projects and remodeled. And the, and the reimbursement of the, that we use the bond funds for to reimburse this fund, that's reflected actually up here in the expenditure category. So if you look at last month's expenditures, they were actually about twelve million dollars higher than this month. So we just reduced those expenditures and reimbursed ourselves out of the bond funds for those purchases we made out of the locally defined fund. Any questions on that? That's that.
All right, any questions on the financial statements? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the financial statements of April twenty twenty-four as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the financial statements for April twenty twenty-four as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. Twelve point zero seven, no, twelve point zero eight, consider approval of budget transfer and amendment to request consideration in June twenty twenty-four.
Okay, budget transfers are fairly routine for the month, which is just where we're moving money within functions, within the budget to get the money in the correct function, functions prior to spending that, those funds. What is significant this month, month is a budget amendment, which, as I explained in the Friday eight update in pretty, pretty good detail, is related to the indirect cost funds that have been accumulating in our general fund, which was set in motion three years ago by Dr. Harrington and Dr. Mary Morris and my predecessor, David Garcia. So those funds in the big plan were to set aside so that when our ESER funds ran out, then those indirect cost funds, biz ops, kept some of those funds for our everyday operations, ed ops. We, they agreed to a formula that they set aside the remaining funds to be used moving forward for I M A purchases and technology purchases. And Dr. Harrington can elaborate on that if he wants to.
Any questions on that? All right, I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the budget transfer and amendment request for June twenty twenty-four as submitted.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the budget transfer and amendment request for June twenty twenty-four as submitted. Please vote. My computer's very slow right now. And that motion passes. All right, twelve point zero nine, consider approval of qualified brokers for investment transactions. Mr. Williams?
Okay, but now we're gonna circle back to some investment related, as we did the investment policy earlier, and these are all kind of tied to that. So each year, the board also, in addition to our investment policy and strategies, also has to approve qualified broker dealers for investment transactions, which just gives us as many opportunities as we can to make the best investments for the district. But it is something that's required for the board to approve.
All right, any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the list of qualified brokers for investment transactions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the list of qualified brokers for investment transactions as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one oh, consider approval of investment officer training sources.
This is something else the board has to approve each year. Myself, Janice Hollingsworth, and we're adding Dana Louts to that as investment officers, we will be. And we're required to get training every four hours, at least four hours every year. So those training sources have to be approved by the board, and there's a list of them there, so.
All right, any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the list of investment officer training sources as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the list of investment officer training sources as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Consider approval of resolution amending authorized representatives for logic investment pool, Lone Star investment pool, and Tex Pool investment pool.
Okay, this last thing for me, these are just making necessary changes due to changing investment advisors and people that are authorized on our investment accounts to, to make transactions. So we just lumped these all into one amendment. Not all of the pools require board approval, but these, these pools do, so they're...
Any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the resolution amendment, amending the authorized representatives for the logic investment pool, Lone Star investment pool, and the Tex Pool investment pool accounts as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the resolution amending the authorized representatives for the logic investment pool, the Lone Star investment pool, and the Tex Pool investment pool accounts as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one two, consider approval of supplemental digital literacy program renewal. Mr. Kerbo.
Well, good evening. It's me again. Have a number of items to present to you. And that first one is a routine purchase of our supplemental digital literacy program that we subscribe to each year. And that's just coming to you as a routine item because of the, the cost that exceeds a hundred thousand dollars.
Are there any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve the renewal of the supplemental digital literacy program from Amplify as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the renewal purchase of the supplemental digital literacy program from Amplify as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. Twelve point one three, consider approval of R F P twenty-four dash one three for third-party transportation at McKinney Vento Student Transportation.
And we utilize a third party for the specialized routes for McKinney and homeless students, McKinney Vento Transportation. And this is a, the previous one expired, or is expiring, and this will replace that. And we're recommending three vendors to be awarded as, award, approve vendors under this.
All right, any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve R F P number twenty-four through thirteen for the third-party transportation as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve R F P twenty-four dash one three for third-party transportation as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one four, consider approval of use of Safe Cycle One grant for Trinity High School fence.
And we've talked about the security fence a number of times tonight, and this is an opportunity for us to actually recover some funds from that safe grant one that's now been made available and approved to reimburse our locally defined capital projects fund in the amount of forty, four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Any questions? I'll accept a motion.
I move the board approve using the Safe Cycle One grant funds for the Trinity High School fence as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, for the board to approve the Safe Cycle One grant funds for the Trinity High School fence as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Consider approval of R F P twenty-four dash zero six copiers.
You know, it's as provided in the Friday update, and again, the agenda item. We've had a long-term relationship with our current provider for copiers, and that is due to expire August thirty-first of this year. So in preparation of replacing our copiers, we issued a request proposal to do that. And we utilized a consultant to help us structure that as a solution that would enhance the services, enhance our machines, and right-size machines to the proper application in setting. In doing so, we had thirteen responses. Number of these were outliers due to how they priced their machines or their inferior response. So for the most part, we eliminated those who were not really serious contenders and narrowed it down to four vendors who you see on our tabulation there that's provided in the document there. I will say that the, what was posted on the agenda for the committee evaluation was a partial document. You should, there should have been this document along with what was posted there. Those have been provided for you. This was the initial evaluation of the committee, and as you can see, the four vendors there, how they fared. Once we completed our evaluations, we brought in all four of these vendors to interview to find out more about their proposal, how they were going to go about replacing our copiers in a very short timeframe. This is June. People will be back in July, so we've got until that long time, get things, things in, in place and so forth. We learned much about their approach to this. We did a product demonstration and site visits for these vendors. We wanted to make sure we understood, of the top three vendors, to understood how their product is going to work. Because our main emphasis, while we will receive some savings, cost savings to this, our primarily concern was that we have a reliable copier solution in place for our campuses. So that was our, our main goal. So we went to three sites and, in the pouring rain last Thursday, whatever, whatever day it was, because we've had a number of those days where it's rained substantially. And conducted product demonstrations, talked to their, we had our techni, technology people there, talking to their technology people. And we conduct client visits with existing customers to find what their satisfaction level was with these vendors. And as we did, once we completed this, we had a debriefing. I will say, we had a committee of nine folks within our district, representing our campuses and departments at all levels to make this decision. And once we concluded that, we had a debriefing to discuss our findings, and we asked them to provide us a final vote. We had the three vendors result, the committee's recommendation is to award this to Canon Solutions America, U S A, as our next copier vendor.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Since, since this is the only document that we have, are these averages at the bottom in the blue, ninety-five, eighty-five, ninety-four?
Yes, sir. That's the initial evaluation, yes.
Okay, was the pick based on, on this averages or what you said, other interviews and other things?
This, this is the initial ranking. The final ranking was based on this, along with the product demonstrate, interviews, product demonstrations, proposals, and prices factored in this. And I, I think we provided the evaluation criteria. Fifty points was allocated to price. The remaining fifty points were allocated to things like service, proposal, or proposed equipment, and those items there.
Well, I'm looking at this, so sheba average is wrong. Yeah. It's actually higher than Canon because it, they're minus one, minus seven, plus eight, plus ten, plus sixty, plus five, plus eleven over Canon. So their average is really higher on this sheet that we got, and that's the only sheet we got. So it was kind of confusing that they had a higher average. But now since you explain it, it makes sense that there's other things entailed in the interview and the cost and everything. So that was kind of strange that they had a higher average, but it's not on here.
Apologize for that oversight.
Yeah, I'm gonna say basically the same thing. Forgive me, just numbers jump out at me. I think committee member E. under the Canon probably did not give a forty-three, fifty-two to make your average work. Probably should have been something higher. But as long as you're good with the recommendation of Canon, I don't see the numbers adding up correctly. But just forgive me for being a math nerd.
Does average work out to ninety-three, fifty-two?
From, that column can't be right. Yeah, because the average even, obviously, the forty-three is, is, is wrong, but that, that average does not add up on that column. So that's... Do we, do we have that data that we can...
We do have it. I can, I can get that recalculated.
It's good to know that you didn't base it... It's good to know that you didn't base it on just this alone. It's what you were explaining to me. So that makes sense.
Yeah, that's what put the four companies in front of us to interview and then we did our additional research.
So this, this calculation simply defined which four went to the next level.
Or eliminated the nine that didn't qualify. Yes, but, yes, that's, that's a good way of putting it.
That was at the bottom. I didn't read that at the bottom.
Okay.
All right, any more questions?
Yeah, does, does this new contract, will it cover all copiers on all campuses?
Yes, all copiers, supplies, toners, staples and anything that's needed for the copier and service. So this is a different model. This is a agreement. This is a basic lease agreement plus a cost per copy. Previously, we've been, we've been accustomed to unlimited number of copiers, or copies, which our copiers basically sit dormant for about four months out of the year, three months in the summer, a month during Christmas and spring break and Thanksgiving. So vendors, you know, they put in enough pricing in there to account for that a time where there's, the copiers aren't going to be used. But we're paying for them as if they're being used to capacity. So this was a different approach and a better approach, in my opinion.
So does this necessitate each copy machine being removed from the campus and being replaced with a new?
Yes, our, our, yeah, current copiers are five years old or will be five years old. And we've had a number of issues with, you know, more frequent breakdowns, as you can understand with the machine that's five years old as it was when it was fresh out of the box. So this will put brand-new machines at all sites, at all sites based on their previous or wherever the current machine is.
Have, have we taken a look at the number of copies that we've copied, made in the last period of time? And calculated that against this new cost per black and white copy and cost of color copy?
Yes, we have. In fact, the, in the tabulation, which is the second attachment there, you'll see we've made sixty-one million seventy-nine thousand and eighty-eight black and white copies last year and then a hundred and forty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-six color copies. So we took that, that's the last complete year that we had. So we took that and applied the cost per copy that each vendor proposed to determine what our projected cost would be for these.
Talk to us about the managed print activity portal that's new.
It's, yes, it's a, it benefits how we deploy our machines and how we can see the activity of machines and determine how they're performing and maintain the security function within our copier performance and our copies that basically, one of the benefits of one of the many benefits is any updates can be pushed out through that, through our technology department. Instead of having to go touch each machine, they can do it from a central location and push it out overnight. Plus, it will help in preventing orphaned copies. We have a, every campus has a stack of copies that were sent to the printer or sent to the copier and never picked up. I've only used those as scratch pads or something like that, scratch paper. But for the most part, you've seen it in Mr. Cargill, you can attest to that as a principal at one of our campuses. So this will help eliminate that. This also provides some security features where, you know, if when set up properly, we can use, users can use their badge to click in. And only the jobs that they've sent to the copiers will appear and then they can print it out at the end. But it won't print out until they come in and access it.
David Garcia and I, many years ago, went over to Grand Prairie to look at this and that's exactly what they shared. Greatly reduced on the orphaned copies. It greatly reduced the number of copies because what was happening is sometimes somebody may push a number of copies and then realize they really didn't need them and then never go pick them up. By forcing, you have to go, you scan, it then prints them for you and then you can take them back. It ensured that they were needed and they said that it did, it really cut down on waste. So they were very, they were, we were very interested in that. This was our first opportunity to make that or move into that.
So there won't be a copy person there? There won't, there won't be a need for a copy person in the copy room?
Yeah, probably not. Not everyone uses one, yeah.
Me too.
So if a campus does choose to use a, you know, volunteer or somebody that will make copies, there's a way around that. We can assign a volunteer badge. We can assign a generic code to the campus where they can print out all the copier jobs. If they, if they do that, not all campuses do that, or have somebody that can provide that oversight.
All right, any more questions?
And is the, is the total cost, now they're moving to a cost per copy, is it, is it borne by the district regardless of what schools are printing it?
The district provides, I believe it is eighteen, what is called production machines, a high-volume machines funded by the district through a central budget. The other copiers are funded by the campus level. If they need to supplement what's there, let's say they have a commonly special ed may be located in another part of the building and their, their need to print out, print copies or send out copies based on an R that happened. And they can't take the time to go walk down to the other end of the building. This gives them that capability. But that's the, those are the types of copies that are, copiers that are funded by the campus.
All right, any additional questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move the board approve RFP twenty-four oh six for copiers and award this contract to Canon Solutions America USA with compensation of thirty percent actual savings to PS Cost Analyst as presented.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve RFP twenty-four dash zero six for copiers and award the contract to Canon Solutions America USA with compensation of thirty percent of actual savings to PS Cost Analyst as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one six, consider approval of RFP twenty-four dash zero seven for interactive flat panel displays.
We just completed the interactive flat panel display deployment at all our elementary classrooms. And so now it's time to move to the junior highs. And this will provide interactive flat panels for junior highs, all five junior high and the Buenger Technology Center.
Excuse me, any questions on this RFP? I'll accept the motion.
I move the board approve the RFP twenty-four dash seven for interactive flat panel displays for superior fiber and data service as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve RFP twenty-four dash zero seven for interactive flat, flat panel displays from superior fiber and data services as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one seven, consider approval of Education Service Center Region eleven twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five contracts.
And this purchase is just for the approval of the items that are fulfilled through the region eleven on an annual basis. And you see the list of services and that they provide there in the attachment.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move that the board approve the proposed Education Service Center Region eleven twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five contracts as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve the proposed Education Service Center Region eleven twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five contracts as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Twelve point one eight, consider approval of renewal of CSP twenty-one dash zero six for child nutrition services produce.
Well, we need to buy some more tomatoes and lettuce and pickles and onions and whatever else grows out of the ground. So this is a renewal of, the third renewal of four existing, or renewal of options for this, for our food service program.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move the board approve the renewal of CSP twenty-one oh six for child nutrition services produce to R Craig Stevens Produce LLC as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve the renewal of CSP twenty-one dash zero six for child nutrition services produce to R Craig Stevens Produce LLC as presented. Please vote. That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Curbel. Twelve point one nine.
There's one more.
Oh, it says Dr. Norgar down here, so.
Oh, well, I'll get out of here then.
Consider approval of renewal of measures of academic progress.
Good, I can do it.
MAP growth license.
She talked about the MAP, the MAP presentation earlier. This is just to continue that subscription through twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five. How'd I do? All right.
All right, any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move the board approve the purchase of MAP growth licenses for our elementary campuses, grades K through six math and grades three through six reading as presented.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve purchase of MAP growth license for our elementary campuses, grades K through six math and grades three through, three through six reading as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. Twelve point two zero, consider approval of advanced classes identified as no pass, no play exemptions for twenty-two-four, twenty-two-five.
Good evening. Well, you've made it. It's nice to be last. So what we have in front of you is the no pass, no play exemptions for twenty-four, twenty-five. Major difference is we cleaned up the, we cleaned up a little bit of the language because court, the only courses that should have been listed in the past were our four core as well as our load. And so we dropped off some of the CTE courses and that's the difference between this year and last year.
Any questions? I'll accept the motion.
I move the board approve the advanced classes identified for no pass, no play exemptions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and second for the board to approve the advanced class, classes identified for no pass, no play exemptions as presented. Please vote. And that motion passes. We're ready for open forum number two, no cards. Other business, this is the opportunity for board members to request items to be placed on future board agendas. Does anybody have anything this evening? All right, so at this time, the board is gonna adjourn into closed session for the purpose of hearing a level three student parent grievance hearing. We're going to give about ten minutes for the room to empty and everyone to get in their places and give the board a little break since we've been going for close to three hours. So we'll reconvene at, let's say, eight fifty-five. I will accept the meeting, a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We are adjourned.